That's well meaning. Shall we break out in song?
We're waiting.
I'd like to call the Aridale County Board of Commissioners to order, and at this time, Mr. Johnson will present the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Good Lord, once again, we just thank you for the privilege to come in your presence and with our prayers and our petitions, and we pray that you'll hear them, Father, and right of our sin and our own foolishness, that you will set these things aside in your mind, Father, and you'll be merciful to us, and you will give us wisdom and sound judgment. And, Father, we just pray that you'll give us patience in our deliberation and conviction in our decisions, Father, based upon what you would have us to do, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Saul Standford, pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mashburn, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, only one adjustment. There is an addition under closed session. It will be for legal, and that will be GS 143-31811A, subparagraph three. That'd be for legal, and it's subparagraph three. That's the only adjustment I have to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Again, like a couple of weeks ago, we did not have a pre-agenda meeting, so we're having our pre-agenda. We're looking at the information basically the first time like we would if we were at the five o'clock briefing. So at this time, we have an appointment before the board, a request from the Stop Child Abuse Now Scan Agency for the adoption of a proclamation proclaiming April 2009 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Amy Oz is here. Marvin, will you present this, and I'll read the proclamation. Aridale County, North Carolina proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem affecting both the current and future quality of life for a community. And whereas, child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and without their knowledge and resources to know how to cope with. And whereas, the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable and in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas, child abuse and neglect can be prevented by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. And whereas, child abuse and neglect not only cause immediate harm to children, these factors are also proven to increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behaviors such as smoking. And whereas, all citizens should become involved in supporting families to provide safe nurturing environments for their children, giving them the opportunity to grow up to be caring, contributing members of the community. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created amongst social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the Aridale County Board of Commissioners that April 2009 be declared as Child Abuse Prevention Month for all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to be called upon to increase their participation in the effect to support families thereby preventing child abuse and to strengthen our communities this seventh day of April 2009. At this time, we have a public hearing to consideration of the economic development incentive for Exeter Properties Group. Who's going to present this tonight?
Mr. Michael Smith.
Mike?
Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. I want to talk with you just for a moment about Project Exeter. This particular company is looking to put together a distribution center. This would be for Land of Lakes Purina, which is an existing facility in our community. Certainly, in a challenging time like this in our economy, we need to do all we can to help our existing companies expand. What we're looking to do here is try and keep these jobs in our community, and in this particular case, increase our tax base. They're looking to build a 150,000 square foot distribution facility there on Old US 70, which is across from the Statesville Business Park. This would be a $5,145,000 investment. At this time, there would be no new jobs, but it would go a long way towards preserving these jobs and giving this company the opportunity to bring other jobs in the future. We would request to utilize the county industrial grant program to help offset costs of new construction. This would be $18,316 per year for a five-year industrial grant program of just over $91,000. We would ask for your consideration of this proposal.
Okay. Commissioner, do you have a question of Mr. Smith? Here none. This is a public hearing, so this time, those wishing to speak either for or against this consideration, please come forward. I move the public hearing to be closed, and all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Any other questions or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion that we grant this request Mr. Smith has brought to us, and that we do agree to a $91,581 expenditure over five years based on this investment, as he proposes, of $5,145,000.
Thank you very much.
You've heard the motion. Any other discussion? No discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Four, zero. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for your support.
I failed to adopt the resolution concerning the Stop Child Abuse Now, so at this time, is there a motion? We adopt the resolution that I read.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion's made. We adopt the resolution for scan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. Administrative matters. Request from IQAT for approval of a revised bylaws to the Community Transportation Advisory Board and approval of the members recommended to serve.
Good evening. Last week, I submitted our FYO 10 application to the NC DOT for administrative and capital funds, and a part of that application, we're asked to report on the activities of our transportation advisory board, both the membership and the activities. In this year's application, they're asking that transit systems look at the membership on their boards and possibly expand their boards to be more inclusive of people in the community. Since our inception as a county department in 2003, our board mostly has been comprised of human service agencies or people that have purchased transportation services. Since 2003, we've seen additional funding to serve the general public for especially seniors, disabled, and persons with low income for employment. These persons may or may not be human service consumers. Therefore, the requirement that DOT is asking has been a good opportunity for us to look at the membership on our transportation advisory board and expand the membership to possibly become more inclusive. The process I used is I contacted four members of our transportation advisory board who have been active, Anna Rice, Lynn Deal, Linda Bledsoe, and Melanie Tutterow, and what we did is we composed a list of people in the community to contact to serve. Nineteen people that were contacted have agreed to serve on this board, and while this might appear to be a large board, what we have tried to do is make it a very inclusive board of not only human service agencies, but also some people that use the service or could have good input into the transportation needs in the community. The NC DOT was informed when I submitted the application that this was coming before the Board of Commissioners tonight for approval, so it is pending on our application. What I'm asking is that the board approve the attached bylaws and the potential list of members to that transportation advisory board.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions, Mr. Garrison?
How many was on the original board?
There were about, about 12.
Are most of those still included, or?
Yes, uh-huh.
You just added another eight, or six, or whatever it is.
Right. And we've tried to get people from different parts of the county and consumers and different groups this year.
Any other questions? Chair, I'm going to take a motion.
Chair, I make a motion. We accept the names of the new members of the advisory board.
Motion's been made that we concur with the list that's presented for this new committee. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Four, oh. Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you very much.
Just for clarification, that also included approving the operational bylaws for that?
Item B, request for status designation for the fiscal year 2010-11 workforce program, with choice being either an electing county or a standard county. Staff recommends the standard county. We've got Mr. Wall here to present.
Thank you for considering the designation of our welfare workforce program. We've operated an electing county for 10 years. We met with the Welfare Reform Committee, and we were unable to have a quorum. We were unable to have a consensus, so I was asked to bring this to you. This is a decision that the county commissioners must choose. We came before you, I think in September, and asked for a designation, and you designated Aridale County to be an electing status county. Well, we sent our plan to the state, and they didn't like it. And so they-
And they what?
They did not like it. They said we had to make changes. The biggest change was that we had to, we had to stop counting SSI income. We were counting all the income in the family household, like food stamps. Food stamps count all the income in the household. And both of these programs are federal programs. So for our county, the state, well, all the electing counties, the state has, the General Assembly has continued to chip away at the cash assistance allocation that we have. If we keep on like we're going, the county, we might go over our allocation. If we go over our allocation, then the county has to pick up the slack and pay 100% of what we go over. If we stay, the standard county, if you go over, then the state or federal government will pay 100% of it. So I want to pass out a form that I did not put in the packet, and I apologize about the electing county status. Right now, we are counting, we are not, we are counting SSI income, and when we started in 1999, there was about 56 families that were not approved because they were over the income limits. If we put them back in the program, we will be just right on the line of our allocation. If you see the information on this form, it shows that for fiscal year 2008, 2009, the year that we're in now, our cash allocation is $944,427. For fiscal year 2008 or '09, we estimate the cost will be $755,000. So we can transfer what we don't spend to tan up child protective services to help support that program. For fiscal year 2009, 2010, our cash assistance is cut about $40,000 to $94,502. If we put the SSI back into the program, we estimate we will spend $898,096. So we'd only have $6,406 to transfer. We also think we'll get some additional applications from the unemployed. So we'll have to factor that in. We don't know how many will be coming into the program. But if we, we might can make it for 2009, 2010. But I don't think we have a prayer for 2009, 2010. I'm sorry, for 2010, 2011. We have, we do have the plan that was sent back, and if you're interested in knowing what the state did not like about our plan, the main thing was the SSI. All electing counties now will have to not count SSI income, and that's other counties in the situation that we are. Right now, there's only eight counties, electing counties, that are counting SSI income. And so whether we're electing, whether we're standard, we're going to have to stop counting SSI income, and we're going to have more applicants coming into the program. The program's going to cost more, and we're going to go over our allocation. We're glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Wall, so what I'm understanding is we were asked to make that decision sometime early on.
Yes.
We made a decision. They don't like our decision. Is that, am I understanding that right? The state does not like the decision?
Well, at the time, at the time you made that decision, we didn't have that rule about having to count SSI. The two attorneys at the Attorney General's office made the decision. Although we've been counting it for 10 years, we can't count it any further, and we'll have to stop it. But right now, since you sent in that form designating us as an electing county, if you stay with that, we will be an electing county until we modify our plans to, we'll have to put the SSI in and send it in, and we'll, you know, we'll be in bad shape.
Do they give you any right to appeal their decision?
Well, I think if you want to, there's no appeal process, but Mike could take it to court and challenge the rules and regulations.
Thank you.
If we change our designation from being an elected, electing county, and just so most folks know, electing gives us some greater flexibility to decide who is and isn't eligible for benefits, and that's worked to our benefit for many years. But if we change and we go back to being a standard county, can we switch back at a later time and become an electing county if they change the rules, or is this a one-way street?
Well, see, right now, electing counties get an allocation for cash assistance. The standard counties do not get an allocation. They just, whatever comes is eligible, they'll pay for it. The state will.
So if we change and we go back to being a standard county, can we, could we switch next year to going back to being an electing county?
I don't know, but I don't think they will reload us and give us more money so that we can go into electing. See, they're, personally, I think they're trying to get rid of all the electing counties.
I think they are, too.
And they want us to be standard. You know, we've been very successful here. We've had a good program. We're very conservative, probably one of the most conservative counties in the state, and we've had the policies at work. The standard counties has, they have opted to use some of the policies that we have. So, but, you know, the time has come where the State Division of Social Services, you know, they're recommending these cuts, and the General Assembly is, you know, recommending these cuts. There is, there is a-
But it's actually not a cut to their budget, because if they, if they widen up the rules for who gets the benefits, it's going to cost them more money, not less.
Yeah. But it's going to be, it's going to be 100% for the, the feds are paying it all, so the states doesn't really care. I don't know why they don't care about the electing counties, but they-
Okay. And this, this change in the interpretation, was that done by, that wasn't done by a court? That was done by some lawyers or some staffers?
Well, I think the staffers went to the Attorney General and asked him to look at it. They mentioned that there were two attorney, assistant attorney generals that had the, had the opinion that we could not do that. So therefore, they're not going to sanction counties that count SSI.
Were they at the state or federal level?
All I'm getting my stuff from is the state. And they, they also said that-
I mean, so is what's changed, I mean, were these Bev Perdu's, you know?
No, it's not that. It's, it's been going on for a number of years.
Yeah, but the ruling just changed this year.
Yeah. So I, you know, we had about $1.4 million or more as cash assistance, and we would spend maybe $800,000. We could transfer the amount that we'd spend, you know, to, to the county to offset with the candidate.
Mr. Moore, my question to you is, is were these political appointees that made this change in the, in the, in the ruling?
I think it's the, the Director of the Division of Social Services, and that's trying to get rid of the electing counties. And to be honest with you, this electing county was, was a Republican move, and, and the Democrats didn't like it, but, and ever since then, they've been, you know, nipping, nipping at our heels.
Okay. You have a projected cost in 2009, 2010 of $898,000. What unemployment rate were y'all assuming that we were going to have in that, in the period of that budget cycle that made you come up with that number?
The unemployed is not in that number. It's just SSI families we think will come back and access the program. We don't, we have not factored in the unemployed. We know that there will be some, but we don't know how many.
Mr. Robertson, the difference between the $755,000 that you see in '08, '09, and the $898,096 you see in '09 and '10, all of that is attributed to the removal of SSI.
Okay.
There, there is no cost factored in to his matrix here regarding unemployment.
But the change in unemployment would change the number of families?
Absolutely. That's, that's one of the risks that we take if we remain standard.
Okay, and that's why I'm asking, do we, have we any idea of what percent unemployment we were assuming when we made these assumptions, when we made the assumption? Because if, if the 898 or 755, you're saying unemployment wasn't taken into account. That's fine. I just want to know what percent unemployment were we assuming? Because if it goes higher than that, we're going to have even more families applying than we thought, and that $6,000 buffer is going to go away very, very, very quickly.
The reasoning was that with our inability to count SSI anymore, the picture was so bleak financially that we felt like it was unnecessary to even include any unemployment figures.
Okay. I'm with you.
We were basically at, at a break-even point now.
Right.
And we assumed that, in the deliberation, the Board of Commissioners would assume that the unemployment's going to be factored in, and that $6,406 spread that we had there is negligible.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Wall is, is right. When we started this program, we were getting about 1.4, well, almost $1.5 million from the state. And as you can see, that figure has been reduced from 1.4 million to $94,502. And he's right in another assertion that he's made, that when we put this plan in place, the people at the Department of Social Services in Raleigh didn't like the plan to begin with. They, they were opposed to anybody going to electing counties. And a brief history lesson, the way the electing counties were finally decided is they put the names of the counties who had applied for electing status in a hat, and they drew them out. That's how ridiculous the debate came. Aridale County fortunately was one of the counties whose name was drawn out of the hat, and they did this on, in our state Capitol. And we, we put the plan in place, and I do remember they gave a report card out to, and evaluated all the plans, and our plan received a very low rating. Now, I would contend, and I think if time permitted, I could demonstrate that our plan was given a low rating because liberals have a very poor understanding of human behavior. But anyway, the fact is, once the plan was in place, we were one of the most successful counties in getting people off of cash assistance and finding them gainful employment. And the way we did that was that we reduced the barriers to work. We spent the money rather in- We spent the money rather in cash assistance for those folks doing nothing. We secured daycare services for them. We removed the transportation obstacles for them. We gave them job training. We removed any obstacle we could possibly think of so that those folks could find a job. And we've been highly successful at it. But the problem is, the people who run the program in Raleigh never liked it. I remember there were some people in this very county who did not like it. There were dire predictions of children starving to death and people sitting on the street begging. None of that ever happened. It's been highly successful, but it, to demonstrate that it's staying from the program, they reduced it from nearly $1.5 million down to $904,000. And they continued to nibble away, as Mr. Walsh said, at the program and make it easier and easier for people to get cash assistance rather than, they decent, disincentivized the program for people to go to work rather than getting cash assistance, assistance. Now, I'll offer my thanks to the DSS staff, Ms. Deal, Ms. Bledsoe, and Mr. Walsh. They continue to get as much horsepower out of this thing as they can, but they kept tuning it and tuning it and tuning it. But when it got down to the point that they, they had to take $143,000 hit out of the program, we just plain, we just simply ran out of gas. It was no longer feasible to do that. And it's, I realize it's a, it's a different day, and, you know, I guess there's still some unwise people that think that socialism might work, it's just never been tried properly, but we'll see. You don't have a recommendation from the Welfare Reform Committee for two reasons. First of which, we do not have a quorum. I'm chairman of that committee, so I asked for consensus. We did not have a unanimous consensus over what we should do. The question arose, and I believe Mr. Garrison asked it, and it was a good question, that if, and he asked the same question you did, Mr. Robertson, that if we simply let the, the plan lapse, would it be easier for us to go back to an electing county? And that's a good question. But if they continue to demonstrate an unwillingness to make it beneficial for electing counties to remain so, I, I don't think it, at this point, it makes any difference. Now, Mr. Walsh, what he didn't say is, in 2010, 2011, it's probably, it's probable that they're going to reduce to 904,502, some lower number. So it would be even more difficult in 2010 and 2011 to do it, because I believe once we're electing status, that's for two years, is that right?
Right, two years. There, there is a bill in the House and in the Senate to hold electing counties, a hold promise, and if they passed that bill, which they did last year, where we didn't have to change it last year, we would still have a 944,000 if it passes, but I don't know whether it passed or not. But it, it did pass a couple of years ago.
So, Mr. Chairman, at the end of the day, in '09 and '10, assuming for the moment that the unemployment situation does not worsen, you only have a $6,406 spread between what the state will give us and what we estimate the expenditures will be. Once you factor in what seems to be a worsening employment situation, then I think the picture's more dire than Mr. Walsh has actually portrayed it here. And that's not a criticism of his presentation, it's just impossible to estimate what the full impact would be. So I, I think as a board, we have, we have to decide whether we're going to merely let the thing lapse and automatically go back to a standard county, or whether we're going to make a decision that we will vote to do so.
Any comments? There's no benef, benefit to just letting it lapse rather than just voting it out, is that?
Well, unless you just want to stick it in their eye and say, "We're going to do it anyway," and they turn it down, which I'll have to confess, I've got some temptation to do, because I got where I don't really like those people or really care what they think.
Okay.
Mr. Walsh, what do, what do you think, before we make this decision?
I'm just your servant, Mr. Walsh.
That's, that's...
I, I think I made it clear that...
You know, I know you've had some thoughts on it, because I'm like Steve, I, I could say the same thing.
Well, if you let it lapse, it's going to be standard. If you don't take that SSI out of it, or, you know, if you, if you don't stop counting the income, they're going to take it out. And let me, let me read you an email that Ms. Deal got. She contacted one of the state representatives. She works in the Work First Program. She's not a politician, but it says, "We met with the Work First Planning Committee, and they had a question. They would like to know what would happen if counting SSI as income is left in the plan, and the plan is not approved, as the letter describes. Would Ardell County automatically become a standard county?" So this is the answer. "The guidance I have been given from the Division is that the proposed county plan would not be recommended to the General Assembly to be elected. Given the Division's legal advice, it is certain that the General Assembly would not allow the county to retain its electing status, and the county would then revert to standard, standard status and have to file a standard policy."
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion, we merely let the thing lapse. And if the General Assembly wants to let it lapse, then those people will receive great joy from it, because they seem to derive pleasure from spending someone else's money, whereas we do not.
Okay. Heard the motion. We let it lapse?
Um...
Question?
By letting it lapse, you're saying that we don't...
I would send it, I would send, I would send it back with the plan that we have for SSI, and once they reject it...
Okay.
We will lapse back.
I can support that.
Okay. I don't mean to call usually unnecessary work on your staff, Mr. Walsh, I just think that we need to make a point about this.
Understood. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries four, zero.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I, I want to thank you, Mr. Walsh, and your staff, for the diligent work you've done over the years while this thing was in place. We could not have gone this far in, in the face of what the General Assembly and the bureaucrats in Raleigh have done to, to make it harder and harder to do. You folks have done a great service to this county, and I appreciate it. And I think this board appreciates it.
Memo five, request for approval to lease Ardell County on vacant lot to Harmony Baptist Church.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll take that.
Okay.
Since 2005, we have been leasing a vacant lot which is adjoining the EMS facility in Harmony. It's a one-acre tract of land, and we've been leasing that to the Harmony Baptist Church, and they've been using it for a parking lot during the services. The lease is up, and what the request before you is that we renew the lease to update that relationship, but that we also allow for an arrangement that would automatically extend the lease for one-year terms, and that it also include the additional language that would allow cancellation by either party at any time with a 30-day written notice. This is, the recommendation is before you, and again, what the benefit to the county is that they maintain that lot. They mow it, they keep the gravel on it, where, where they have gravel, and, and it saves us from having to send somebody all the way up there to, to mow that acre of land and keep it mowed and so forth. So it is the recommendation, you approve it as it's presented.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Mashburn? Not, is our motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries four, zero. Request for approval of the revision to the Ardell County Ambulance Franchise Ordinance, memo six. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. Attached to memo six is a list of proposed changes to the Ardell County Ambulance Franchise Ordinance. This has been before you in the past, and there were some adjustments that were requested. I'll just go down the list and give a, a brief description of those changes. First of all, for new applicants, what's been requested is a copy of the most current audited financial statement or a surety bond in the amount of $10,000. And also a certified check or money order in the amount of $1,500 to recover the county's costs for investigating the applicant's equipment, resources, personnel records, that type of There is also, as you see below there, actual specification of the length of the contract or leech, length of the franchise agreement. Previously, it was just open-ended as defined by the board, and now we're saying no greater than three years. And the last thing that we did was make some adjustments to renewal applications. And there's several, several different items there. I think the items that were most, most emphasized by the board in previous meeting was a list of the personnel, their certifications, their training, a list of the vehicles that the ambulance franchisee has, when those were put into service, that type of thing. And we still request a check or money, or money order in $1,500 to recover the county's costs for investigating the services performance.
You've all had plenty of opportunity to look at this thing for the last, like, three or four meetings, so it's like you have any other questions right now? Maybe Tracy can answer them.
I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. It says in, under add, it says, "A copy of the most current audited financial statement as it pertains to the operations in the county or a surety bond." They can do either one.
Yes. That's the way it was intended.
I would assume the surety bond, Mr. Pope, this may be a question, the surety bond would be to guarantee the performance of services? Or actually, what would they be?
Yes, sir.
The only concern I have, if they don't get, and Mr. Jackson, I'm not trying to wear you out on this thing. The only concern I have, if, if they elect not to give an audited financial statement, then we have no way to ascertain their financial viability.
Right.
Other than them posting some kind of surety bond that guarantees they're going to be able to perform the duty.
Right.
The question I got, though, is if in the middle of a year, all of a sudden, they can't perform as advertised, it's going to cost us a whole lot more than $10,000 to gear up and plug a hole in the services. Is that a reasonable...
I would defer to Mr. Pope on that, as far as the amount.
I mean, I don't imagine a $10,000 surety bond. I'll be honest with you, I've never purchased one, but I wouldn't imagine that a whole lot of expense to buy something like that.
Right. The only, the way that I came up with that amount, I looked at some other municipalities and counties to see what they required as far as a surety bond, and that was a pretty common amount. Now, whether that would be enough to actually cover the cost if it was necessary in terms of seeking the compensation, I don't know.
Well, I'm assuming most of the time, they do, you know, nursing home, they go pick somebody up from nursing home. They don't do that a mu, much emergency service unless it's a serious incident and they assist us. But my question is, if all of a sudden, they just pull out, and if New Care, who is already here, does not have the capacity to bring in other ambulances, then at some point, we may be forced, Mr. Mashburn, to go purchase an ambulance in the middle of the year and bring on enough staff to operate that ambulance. And $10,000 is not going to approach that cost. That's the question, the concern I have.
You're, you're correct. I think the $10,000 really is just a stopgap. It's just to, and, and Mr. Corbett's here, and he may or may not want to, to address this, but...
I'm not try, trying to create an unnecessary obstacle...
Sure.
...to the county or Mr. Corbett, for that matter, to be competed with.
Sure.
But I, I want to make sure that if they can't perform their duty, that the taxpayers all of a sudden don't have to come up with $125,000 or $50,000 for an ambulance and ever how many paramedics we have to have to do that.
I, I suppose you could say that that's a risk you take every day.
Well, that's true.
You know, if New Care was to go out tomorrow, we haven't requested an audited financial statement for them, and we don't have a surety bond, we'd still have to put that, that amount of money forward to cover the resources and personnel and, and equipment.
But we do have a history of these folks being reliable.
Right.
Right.
And just in general, that, that was a, a generalization, not necessarily aimed at New Care. But I suppose you could look at it as, you know, you're either asking upfront for the audited financial statement in good faith, and if that can't be provided, then there's another option where, after the fact, they can provide, they have another option of providing a, a surety bond. I think it's, you know, based on what I've seen in other jurisdictions, not an unreasonable request. But I don't know that you could ask for a large enough amount in a surety bond to cover what it would cost if the county had to start its own convalescent ambulance service. It'd be rather substantial.
Ask for a amount that at least ease the impact of it.
Sure. Well, you know, we've looked at that, and we figured it probably costs about $300,000 if we had to start cold.
Mr. Pope, you, I'm sure you deal with surety bonds. What would it cost someone to purchase a surety bond of $10,000? Any idea?
Um, no, I don't think I do. The bond and company would look at the financial condition of the company as, as a condition before they would issue, issue the bond. They wouldn't just issue a bond for anybody.
Right.
If I asked for a bond, they probably wouldn't issue it for me, but, you know, they'd, they'd look at your net worth and your history. I wouldn't think the premium for a $10,000 bond would be significant. My guess is it would be a few hundred dollars, but I don't, I don't know, I'm guessing.
Certainly, this is just staff's recommendation.
I understand. I'm not trying to pick it to death, I just want to make sure we don't get hurt.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments, or ready to move on this? Fair motion?
I've looked through it, and one other question, I promise. As far as, you know, I, I asked you before, and I assume it remains in the, the body of the ordinance, that you're not changing. If there is a change in ownership, then the new owner has to, comes under these guidelines, is that right?
That's right. Any, any percent change?
Okay. Board's open for motion?
Mr. Chairman, if it's pleasing to the board, I'd offer a motion that we, that we adopt this ordinance. I, I would like to amend the $10,000 amount. I, I agree, Mr. Pope, it's probably going to be a few hundred dollars, if that much. I'd like to raise that to $50,000.
Okay.
That's still a drop, I mean, that's still a drop on the bucket.
We may be talking about something that won't happen, but at least that'll soften the impact in case it does.
Heard the motion that we adopt the ordinance as presented with the one amendment raising the $10,000 bond to a $50,000 bond. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Request for approval of a recommendation for scope and membership of an air quality committee. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I was asked at our last meeting, or at your last meeting, to put together a scope and a list of recommended participants on an air quality working group that was established. And included in your package was a proposed scope and those names. And I'd like to read the scope for everyone's benefit, if you don't mind. This committee will be made up of representatives from agencies that will represent the various industries of Iredell County. It will serve to educate these industries and other affected parties about air quality issues and gather information regarding non-attainment and its consequences. The group will disseminate pertinent information to the businesses and commercial entities of Iredell County so they can plan accordingly. It will also research, discuss, and recommend to the Board of Commissioners reasonable measures that will be beneficial to air quality, be cost-effective, and agreeable to local economic entities. Again, this group would be basically an advisory committee that would gather information, make recommendations to the board, and disseminate information as it pertains to air quality to related agencies and associated entities. The committee members that I've recommended to you were basically representatives from the Economic Development Community, Chambers of Commerce, the school syst, and the school systems. We also have had a request from the Iredell County Farm Bureau to be represented as well. In addition to the committee, potential committee members, I've also recommended several agencies to act as ex officio or technical, ex officio members or technical advisors to the committee once it's actually up and running. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm glad to say that you've included at least one member from the farm community because I know what we're looking at now is the quality of the air as it's, we're seeing it from 150 South where the traffic is. But my experience is, before this is over, they will be more concerned or as concerned with the quality of how many cows you have per acre producing gases. And so if we don't head this thing off at the beginning and at least have some input, I'm afraid this voice will be left out. So, in fact, since this is an advisory committee, I'd like to see probably others that have some dealing with livestock being included because it will eventually come to that. Anybody else have any comments?
I agree, you have ex officio members. Someone had brought to my attention that, I might say this, and Doug, Mr. Vaughn, may throw a shoe at me because I'm asking him to assume another responsibility, but he could have designated under ex officio members, probably Mr. Vaughn, his designee from ag extension. That's a good clearinghouse to disseminate information to the agricultural community.
Wanted to make a comment, not so much about the composition of the board, but I think under the air quality committee's scope, I wanted that to be specified. If you recall from our last meeting, my hesitancy to go this route was the fact that there's no authority to take any action. Your second sentence, I thought, was complete, and it said, this will, the purpose of this committee will be to serve and educate industries and other affected parties about air quality issues and to gather information regarding non-attainment and its consequences. Now, if you skip down two sentences, it says, "It will also research, discuss, and recommend to the Board of Commissioners reasonable measures that will be beneficial to air quality, cost-effective, and agreeable to local entities." I think before y'all do that, you need to have a briefing about what our legal limitations are, which I think are absolute. We, I don't know that we have any authority to do, to mandate that people not drive their cars, drive smaller cars, or pass out Roll-Aids to cows, okay? So, given the fact that we don't have the ability to do any of those things, I don't want to give anybody on this committee the perception that we do and that we expect them to give us any recommendations because we don't have the, we don't have the authority to do anything, and I don't want to pretend like we do. I don't, so I just want to make that rule clear, and you might want to deal with that one upfront, and that might save you a lot of discussion and heartache along the way.
In light of what I said about the Farm Bureau being represented, I would also, at this time, like to offer the name, since it is, has been left open at this time, of Richard Reneger, who, by the way, was serving on the state Farm Bureau during, when a lot of this has arisen, and he's very familiar with some of these same issues, and also has some good contacts with Senator Burr, who has helped us before with this issue when it came to us four, five years ago. So I'd like to recommend him as that appointee. Charles Rogers, the other commissioner.
That's fine, Mr. Chairman, you had, you had some other people interested, I think, too.
As I said, I think we could probably even expand it if you felt like necessary.
I would, if it pleases you, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to include Mr. Doug Holland and Mr. Charles Carter in there from the ag community. I don't think, that's three from that one community, but in light of the fact you've got, what? Eight other, eight other areas of the county covered. I don't think that improperly brings it out of balance. I think those two gentlemen have expected, I talked to Mr. Holland personally, and I heard through Mr. Vaughn that Mr. Carter desired to serve, or he was actually a recommendation from the Farm Bureau.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for clarification. And I think, based on our discussions, I know the answer, but you call, you say these are ex officio members that are listed there from the different agencies, but your intent is that they would be non-voting members of that committee, but more technically advisors to the committee than voting members?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They should not drive to a meeting on a hot, muggy day in the summertime.
Anyone else? You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we accept the name of the members that have been mentioned and the additional members that have been added, along with the ex officio members.
Motion's been made to request approval of the recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Request from the Iredell Stateful School System for approval of a utility easement, an eight-inch pipeline with PSNC Energy for Carter Creek Elementary and Middle School.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that one as well. I do have an email from Mr. Rob Jackson with the Iredell Stateful School System recommending that the county commissioners approve this. This would, of course, have been approved by their board with the, except for the fact that under the type of financing that was used on building this school facility, it has to be in the county's ownership. And as such, it requires you to approve the easement. But it does come with a recommendation from the Iredell Stateful School System that will actually utilize this line that you approved this easement.
Any questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries four zero. Request for discussion regarding Senate Bill 758, an act removing the secondary roads from the state highway system and to transfer the responsibility for construction and maintenance to secondary roads to counties. Okay? You've all seen this bill last couple of weeks especially, way too often, I feel. So, does anyone here like to bring up their thoughts on this bill and how we need to act to this?
My first question was, what are those two idiots in Charlotte thinking? Do they have any impact how this is going to affect counties around the state? And I don't know if they know, or they don't care, or whatever. But they sit over there and they continue to throw one mandate after another mandate after another mandate on top of us, and now they're not satisfied to do that. They're shirking responsibility that has been theirs for, what, two years?
Since the 1920s.
Since the Great Depression.
Well, since 2009.
Eighty years. And there's no end to those people's foolishness and incompetence over there. There's no end to it. They've lost their minds.
Fire call, according to Mr. Mashburn, he thought that we would have to add another five cents or so to the tax rate to pay for that. That would be just shy of an 11% tax increase. So, and I promise you, if they took the money from secondary road maintenance, then we would not see more money spent on roads. The money that they saved by the counties taking on this responsibility, that amount of money would be spent on other giveaway vote-buying programs, and that's all it is. It would not, you know, I-77 would not get widened any sooner. The I-77, I-40 interchange would not get improved any sooner. This is, this is just another way of the state accessing money in a down economy. I'm absolutely against it, and I think that NC, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, has come out against it. And I think that, I guess the action that we would take is to inform our delegation that we also are absolutely against it. And I think we ought to specify that for Iredell County, it would mean a 10-point, we estimate approximately a 10.7% tax increase at a time when our unemployment rate is approaching 13%. This is not the time to raise taxes.
Well, if you look over in the body of it, it's not simply the maintenance of the roads. When building cranks back up, we're going to be responsible for paving the roads in these subdivisions, well, the developer will, but then we assume the responsibility of maintaining those roads in the subdivision. Who in the world knows what that expense is going to be? And not only that, if you read over there, the state has the sole discretion as to what constitutes a secondary road. So I got a pretty good idea.
That's going to get broadened.
Any road but Highway 150, the two interstates, 6470, 90, 901, anything besides that is going to be a secondary road.
Where, I guess I'm questioning, where is the, is the support for this? I don't know, is it strong support, is it medium support? I know at the conference, we went to the GOALS conference, this was an item that was with all the delegates, was very little interest in this at all. But it still keeps raising its ugly head.
I don't think there's any county that I'm aware of that is supporting this. I think this is strictly coming from the General Assembly. I'm not aware of any municipality supporting it either because, in talking to some of the managers, and there's already an effort underway trying to get the municipalities to take over the responsibility of all the state roads that go through the municipality. And right now, the, if it's a state road and it goes through a municipality, the state maintains that. They're trying to get the cities to take that over. So I, it has to be just a state budget reduction attempt.
If I'm not mistaken, we've already sent a resolution citing our opposition to this, if we're not, didn't we at the previous meeting?
I don't think so. Not this one, I don't think. We, you recently sent one, but honestly, I don't remember what it was, but it was...
Maybe that...
It's getting to be a more frequent occurrence as Raleigh continues to try to figure out ways to shift burdens onto the counties.
Maybe that was during the type of, time of the debate over the GOALS, when we came out pretty strongly against it. So I think the least we should do was come up with a strong resolution at this point, you know, stating our position that we're not interested. And I feel very few citizens are interested in this thing. This is a monster.
Be willing to throw in a line that we're not interested in any more unfunded mandates, period.
Probably one of the arguments that's made at the General Assembly is North Carolina and Texas are the only two states that do not have a county road system. And, but what they don't usually tell you is, in those other states, the state usually, health and social services are almost entirely a state, a function of state government. And so what you see here happening is that they're attempting to give up the secondary roads, but there's no quid pro quo, is that the term on that, where we give up? I mean, they take something as well.
What they also don't tell you that there, it was a time in 1929 when it was to the advantage of the state, of both North Carolina and Texas, to take those away from us for taxation reasons. And now, when it comes a disadvantage to them to maintain these same roads they took away, now they want to throw it back on the counties, who we only have one way of taxation, and that's through property taxes to keep up the roads. It hasn't changed in 80 years. It's just whose advantage it is to keep the roads up. I would say that, it'd be my suggestion, we draw up a very strong resolution, send it to the next meeting for your approval.
Well, when is this bill going, is it out of committee? What's the status of it?
Thought it was in, it was still in the committee in the Senate, was it?
Still in committee, we probably got time.
It can move very fast, I'm not even sure. If you want to wait two weeks to send, you can do a letter that will probably have the same effect. And...
Well, if you'd like to do that, if we, you know, we don't feel comfortable waiting... Well, if you'd like to do that, if we, you know, we don't feel comfortable waiting two weeks, I, you know, we can do a letter.
I don't think we oughta wait. I don't think we oughta wait.
Yeah, I think it'd move pretty fast.
Why don't we just do that, then? Issue a letter, and we can s, say in the letters our same, uh, you know, concerns that we could do in a resolution. Sometimes it may be more effective for a letter than a resolution anyway. Could you get us something pulled together for us, Mr. Mashburn?
And I'm sure Ms. Morecambe can do that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm gonna beg your indulgence, but I can't contain myself anymore. We sit here...
Please don't, go right ahead.
Here's the facts, folks. The, the facts are these. For now, almost seventeen, or, or, yeah, going into our seventeenth year, we've had a group of people in Washington that have been in control, in Washington, well, in Raleigh, who are, I don't wanna borrow Mark Levine's term, they're statists. They're not liberals. I'm a liberal. Liberal coming from the same word as liberty. I believe in the Lockean creed, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These people are only liberal about three things: sex, drugs, and spending somebody else's money. That's the only thing they have to do with liberty. And there's no end to that, folks, despite the fact that they've raised taxes countless ti, countless times, and you have the highest corporate income tax in the southeast, you have the highest marginal income tax in the southeast, we have the highest gasoline tax in the southeast. They continually did dump more and more cost on local government, and they shirk responsibilities that in some cases are constitutionally theirs. These people have no physical discipline whatsoever. And when they run out of money, they simply send the bill to somebody else, or they don't pay their bills. This is, this is how reckless these people are. And while people aren't upset about it, and just to show that I'm an equal opportunity criticizer here, where in the world are the Republicans over there? Somebody ought to be standing on their desk in the General Assembly pitching a hissy feat. And what are they doing? They're over there in the dark somewhere, cowering, from these radical statists. So my only assumption is, they may not be statists, but they're neo-statists. And I, I'm, I can't do a darn thing about it and pitch a fit, so that's why I'm here tonight, excuse me.
Well, I, the, the only observation I can make is, is really, it, it's just been a constant, uh, list of proposals, whether it's been from federal or from state, to pass either additional requirements onto the county, additional funding responsibilities onto the county, or broadening the scope of basically the welfare programs. All, all I can say is, people voted for change, and by golly, they got it. Um, hold on to your hats, we only have three and a half more years of, of this. Uh, uh, and all I can say is, I hope they're happy. Thank goodness Iredale County was not one of the counties to screw up and send that wrong message.
Done.
Okay, uh, in order to make this official, since this was on the agenda, uh, is there a motion that we, uh, formulated a letter and sent to our, our delegations at the committee?
Some movement, Chairman?
Motion being made, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Likewise, motion carries. Request for approval of the March seventeenth nineteen, nineteen, boy, who knew what I meant, two thousand nine minutes. Move, we approve the minutes, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, four. Motion carries four oh. Announcement vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, uh, appointments to the boards and commissions, Stateful Planning Board ETJ one appointment. We got that nailed down yet?
No, sir. Mr. Phil Collins over at the city is sending out a letter to a group of people that we've looked at, and hopefully out of one of those, we'll get...
Animal Grievance Committee, uh, one appointment. I move, we, uh, we, uh, that we, uh, look at this again next month, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, two appointees.
Okay, nominate Colleen Caldwell?
Colleen S. Caldwell has been nominated. Any other nominations? Fear none. It's our motion, we accept Ma, Ms. Caldwell by acclamation. If so, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Ms. Caldwell is, uh, received by acclamation. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, six appointees.
Chairman, nominate Bill Todd, Philip Killiam, and Ruth Anderson.
You have three nominees, Bill Todd, Philip Killiam, and Ruth Anderson, Anderson. Um, any others? No, I move this nomination to be closed and these three to be accepted by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I finish business. Under new business, I, I received a copy of a letter today, uh, leaders at the core of better communities. This is from the International City County Management Association, ICME, ICMA credentials managers. Uh, dear Honorable Chairman Williams, I'm pleased to inform you that Joel R. Mashburn, Iredale County Manager, recently received the International City County Management Association, ICMA's credentials manager's designation. Mr. Mash, Mashburn is one of more than a thousand local government management professionals who participated in the ICMA volunteer credentials, credentialing program. To be credentialed by the ICME, a member must have significant experience as a senior management executive in local government, and have earned a degree preferably in public administration or in a related field, and demonstrated the commitment to high standards of integrity and to lifelong learning and professional development. This time, we need to offer up our hand to Mr. Mashburn for doing his act.
Please.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have one item before we move away from new business.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, we're coming, fast approaching the point where the lease is gonna expire between us and the Kiwanis on the fairgrounds. And, uh, I'm bringing a report from the Fairgrounds Committee that what we would like to consider is the establishment of a committee to renegotiate that lease and to look at a long-term capital improvement plan for the fairground. Understanding, there's not a lot of money available, but we can eat an elephant if we take a bite of it at the time. And there are some, some chronic capital needs there that keep resurfacing, and we address them the best we can with the, the money that we have. But if we're gonna have, continue to have a viable fairgrounds, whether it's in that location or someone else, at some point, we're gonna have to, uh, to invest some money. And I think we all agree with that on the, uh, Fairgrounds Committee. So if it's, if it's in order, I'd like to, uh, offer a, a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we establish a committee, and that that, uh, there'd be a representative from this board. I think it's appropriate, since I'm on the Fairground Committee, that I would be a member of this, uh, subcommittee or ad hoc committee. And, uh, if another commissioner desires to serve, we'll be glad to accept a volunteer. I know all of you gentlemen are very busy with assorted duties, so if you would, we'd be glad to have you. But that that committee would be comprised of at least one county commissioner, uh, two citizens from the, uh, from the county, uh, Mr. Harvey Pons, Mr. Jim Head, who would rec, represent the Kiwanis Club, and two members of the Ag community. And that Mr. Mashburn and Mr. Vaughn serve on that in an advisory capacity. And, uh, if that pleases the chairman, I would offer that motion.
Heard Mr. Johnson's motion, all in favor of, motion, say aye.
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 Just announce that as a, a vacancy and come back with some nominees there next week.
Um, well, we could do that, yeah, I was just making the motion that we do that.
Y'all can do it.
Okay, just, if we would, let's...
Go ahead.
Part of my motion would be that we'd put that on our next agenda.
Okay. Okay, that, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries. We'll add this to the next month's agenda on, on, uh, vacancies. Um, any other new business? County manager's report?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a report as such, but I do have a couple of dates that I want to bring to your attention. Uh, first of all, the County Assembly Day, which is a, an annual event, uh, when the, uh, county commissioners go to Raleigh, uh, while the General Assembly is in session. And, uh, that's gonna be, that is set for April the twenty-ninth. And we need to go ahead and let them know pretty soon, uh, who will be attending. This will not require an overnight stay. It's gonna, the, the way the agenda is this year, uh, we'll be able to go down and back in the same day, but that is on April the twenty-ninth, so, um, please let, uh, Gina or me know if you, uh, if you are gonna be able to do that. Another date I want you to, uh, put on your calendar if you can, is, uh, on April the sixteenth, we are gonna be hosting the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' District Meeting. It will be held at the Ag Center. Uh, dinner will be at five thirty, and then there will be a program following that. There will be a legislative update and several other issues. Two of the items that will be, though, is they're asking Iredale County to spotlight, uh, two programs that have received actually statewide recognition. Uh, one is, um, the, um, Waste to Energy Project at the landfill, and the other is, uh, the Third Creek Elementary School Lead Program. Mr. Rob Jackson will be doing that presentation, and, um, David Lambert and representatives of, um, Energy United will be doing the other one. We're limited to twenty minutes for both projects, so, you know, it's, it's not gonna get into detail about any of them, but they did want us to, uh, spotlight those two programs that are in Iredale County. So again, that's, um, Thursday, April the sixteenth, at five thirty, at the Ag Center. And, uh, we certainly hope that, uh, all of you, if you can, would attend that. The other thing, uh, I wanted you to be aware of is that we, annually, we've always had a retiree, uh, an employee service recognition and a retirees' recognition, uh, dinner. Uh, it's usually been in two parts, uh, one of it was on Thursday evening, and the other was on the s, the Friday following that, at lunch. Uh, those were for the five, ten, and fifteen-year employees. The one on Thursday were for the twenty-year and, and above, and those retiring. This year, as a cost-saving measure, we have consolidated all of that into one, uh, reception that will be held from three until five o'clock on Thursday, the twenty-third of April. And, um, the, there will be, there's not gonna be a meal associated with this, but we will recognize, uh, the employees. I, I know that that's not, uh, necessarily for all of you, the most convenient time. It is gonna be a different format than we've ever done before. We really don't know how well it will work or how well it'll be received, but we, uh, we feel that it was, uh, the appropriate thing to do this year. And actually, uh, this came as a suggestion from several of the employees as a cost cov, cost-cutting measure. So, um, that again is Thursday, April the twenty-third, from, um, three until five o'clock, and it probably will be over by about four thirty, actually. And, uh, hopefully you will, uh, be able to attend all or a portion of that. Mr. Chair, those are the announcements that I have, and, and of course, there are two items under closed session.
Mr. Chairman, one, one, while we're talking about dates, if you would like to, on May the eighth, the North Carolina, North Carolina Aeronautics Council will hold their meeting at the Statesville Airport. Lunch will be served, and there'll be a tour given of the facility. If you'd like to come, let me know, and I'll call Phil Collins over at the city and get your name on the list. Be glad to have you.
What time, Mr. Duncan, you said lunch?
Yeah, I think you'll need to arrive, I, I'll confirm, you probably need to arrive around eleven thirty.
Okay.
Be held in the Lowe's hangar.
No other business then, and I move that we enter into closed session in accordance to GS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A, fo, four, and I didn't get that last, what was this?
The, the legal, the, the only difference between that one and the first one is, the last number is three.
Okay, GS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A, three.
That's correct.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. We're now in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, the, um, if we could take the, uh, economic development item first, and then, uh, I think Mr. Russell Marderson is here, uh, for that, uh, and, um, then Mr. Marderson will do.
We all cleared out.
Oh yeah.
It's be time for, uh... Action with the stars. Motion, we come back in to, uh...
Open the session.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a motion authorize Attorney Bill Pope to modify the economic development incentive agreement for NGK Ceramics, LB Plastics, and Inmore... Inmore? Elmore? Marine engines. Is that right? Elmore? Okay. Marine engines. All the papers on the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Is there any other discussion we wanted to at this time? If not... And if that's all we can come up with and it's all the damage we can do to RDL County for one evening, then I'll move the re-adjourn.
You're here.
Papers say aye?
Aye.
Go home. We've done our bit of damage.